Wind's a call. Something different? I can have a...
Trish Elgleeson, Assistant City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, May 16th, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on sustainable Dubuque.
Good evening and welcome to the special session of the Dubuque City Council for May 16th, 2022. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city webpage at www...
Unmuted.
The website is www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. The roll call vote for tonight. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Barber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Mayor Protem Resnick read the call and stated that the special session of the City Council called for the purpose of conducting a work session to receive an update from National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium curator and conservation programs Jared McGovern regarding sustainable Dubuque.
Mr. McGovern. Mr. Jared McGovern, welcome. And we'd love for you to give us a... Oh, I'm... Yes. It's Gina Bell from the city.
Good evening. Gina Bell, City Sustainability Coordinator. And I just wanted to set the stage before we have Jared come up here. And recently I've heard news of 60 degrees Celsius temperatures in India destroying most of their crops for the year. Climate activists setting themselves on fire in front of the Supreme Court. And it's really easy to lose hope. What we're looking at and what the science is showing us is things are not going well. But I hold on to what we can do, and that's take action. And our climate action alone is... Our climate action plan alone is a massive undertaking, and yet we have fantastic partners. And something about Jared that is great for me is that he does bring me hope because he is trying to do this alone at times. And he's out there and he's meeting so many of our sustainable Dubuque principles, including clean water and native plants and animals, but also the part about community knowledge because he is truly an educator. And so it's really exciting for us to have him here tonight to share and share about his action that he's taking so that we can not lose hope. And I have this video queued up, so... Maybe? Hmm. I don't have this video queued up. It's in there. Nope. I'm so sorry, Jared. Let me see if I can... Let me see if I can play it from here. Oh. Well.
Nice one.
We can send you the video to watch later.
Yeah, awesome. Okay, so yeah, no worries. So that was just a quick eight-minute video that the Iowa Public Television here and I will put together as part of the phenomena-based education program with our area fifth graders. Before I get started, my name is Jared McGovern with the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium. Thank you all for having me today. Gina got me all choked up back there talking about hope because that is how I end every single program that I lead with every single age group, doesn't matter who you are. If you don't believe that something can be done, then nothing will be done. And so, hope is a good thing. Naive optimism is dangerous, but hope is necessary. So, pretty much everything we're going to be talking about today is about action. It's about hope, but it's also about building a value system because you're not going to act upon something unless you care about it, and you will not care about it unless you have some form of basic understanding about said issue. So, what that video was, that was going to show you something that happened about six years ago. I came back to the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium around seven years ago. I'm the definition of a boomeranger here in Dubuque County. I'm from Piastah. I left twice, three times technically, came back three times. Some of you may remember Mark Wagner, the retired education director at the River Museum. I like to joke that I was the person he hired the most. He hired me three different times in my career so far at the exact same place. Dubuque holds a special place in my heart. It's a great community. It's a place of change, a place that is open and comfortable with change. It's very hard at times, but all change is. And, you know, in my lifetime, I'm 36 years old. I was born and raised and grew up in this community and as did all of my family. And our grandpa, he called this God's country, and he was right, very, very right. So, the mussel story that was going to be up there. I'm getting choked up. Grandpa Bud would be like, "Tough enough, Jared." The mussel story up there was about engaging high school students in real, authentic conservation work. We've been working with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service on propagating federally endangered mussel species in the ice harbor since about 2005, but we do so in culture cages where we place fish, fish that have mussel glukity attached to them. And about six years ago, I reached out to the guys and amazing mussel biologists, Megan, Nathan... When I say guys, that's gender neutral. I'm from Dubuque. It's just a general group of individuals. Megan, Nathan, and Beth, and asked if we could make this program more visible, if we could build something where we could truly have students engaging in an authentic, real conservation initiative on a regular basis. And they said yes. And that's where submersible upwelling systems came into play. And since then, we've been engaging high school students in mussel conservation at the River Museum, university students such as those with University of Dubuque and University of Wisconsin Platteville in mussel conservation work regionally over the last five, six years. But we do not do this alone. City of Dubuque is involved in this work. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Army Corps of Engineers, Iowa Department of Natural Resources, Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. You can't do any of this stuff alone, and we're lucky here in Dubuque that we have so many different conservation-minded organizations and sustainability-minded organizations that it is not hard to find partners. It's not hard at all. Now, with mussels, they're a really great story of hope, and so I do have some items here. I brought visuals, as Gina said. I am an educator. And the first thing that I'm going to send around is an ebony shell mussel that has two holes that have been punched out of it. This animal I pulled out of the Mississippi River on the other side of the flood wall down by the Star Brewery. And if you ever go down there and you check out that exhibit in the case, you see all those mussel shells. They did use waste mussel shells to build more land out towards the Mississippi River when they were expanding the footprint of the Star Brewery. That animal in particular, you do not find here anymore. That is an animal that has been extirpated from the state of Iowa. Ebony shell mussels do not make their way all the way up to Dubuque because their hostfish no longer is here. Their hostfish was a skipjack herring that migrates, and with the construction of the hydroelectric dam at Keokuk, they were no longer able to make their way north. And as those animals were overharvested, as the adult animals aged and died, there was no repopulation, and therefore those mussels are no longer here. Those mussels were used to build these. That is a shell from the Iowa Pearl Button Company out of... Card from the Iowa Pearl Button Company out of Muscatine, Iowa. So, the pearl button industry is a fascinating story in itself. And the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium, I'll get into its mission here momentarily, is about inspiring stewardship of rivers and history by creating educational experiences. And how do you connect history and conservation? How do you connect conservation, history, and now innovation in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics? Well, you do it by telling the story of people. At least that's how I choose to do it. And in this case, we used to believe that natural resources were inexhaustible. When John Frederick Beppel, who brought that industry to Iowa in about 1890, we thought we'd never run out of these things. They were everywhere, millions upon millions upon millions of them in the Mississippi River and other rivers draining into the Mississippi River. But 20 years later, we started seeing those populations collapse, crash. People made the decision to start studying these things. People made the decision to start looking into conserving a slime-filled rock, something that's seemingly insignificant in the grand scheme of things, but is extremely important, almost disproportionately to the health as we learn more, as we study these animals more. So, history isn't in the past. Our past is history, but history is about evolving value systems, cultures that are growing, changing, and shifting over time. And so, we went from a culture that believed these natural resources were ours to take. It was our right. We would never run out, to a culture who is now starting to believe that it is our responsibility to steward these resources, to protect them, to manage and care for them. And that is happening, and it is exciting. Seventy-four percent of freshwater mussels need some form of protection. They do, right? There are going to be more mussels that go extinct. It will happen. But we have hope that we can find a balance in which people and our relationship with the environment can equalize, can stabilize, and we will both continue to thrive, our society as well as our environment. And this animal represents that to me, is that innovation and that continued hope and learning. That is a black sand shell, and you'll see there's a little Dremel mark in it, a 77. That was an animal that was tagged and then collected out of the Iowa River Landing in the Iowa River years ago. So, there are active mussel restoration projects ongoing on rivers and streams across the state of Iowa and the entire tri-state area of Iowa, Illinois, and Wisconsin. There are people out there that are working on fisheries, passage, lowhead dam removal, connectivity to the Mississippi River, like on the Upper B Branch. And so, there is hope. Mussel populations can rebound. We are working to bring these animals back from the brink of extinction. So, freshwater mussels are Iowa history. It's just a fun story to tell. But it's more than a story. You have to act. And so, that's where the rest of this presentation is going to be shown here. So, we've got the video of the importance of freshwater mussels, which I think we need to duplicate this in order for it to work. That's fine. We can just go to the rest of the PowerPoint.
There is no more of your slides are in here.
Did that PDF come up?
I opened it. Do you guys have the PDF? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, here it is. Sorry.
No, you're good. That's okay. Like I was trying to say back there, I had a presentation for 800 fifth graders at the Iowa Children's Water Festival last Thursday, and it was awesome. I had videos and like rock music and stuff like that. I left my computer in Dubuque, three hours away, so I got there and I had to make something up, and I started singing songs like, "A mussel's not a clam, a mussel's not a clam. Hi-ho the derry-o, a mussel's not a clam," or an oyster. That was terrible. This isn't up there. Do I have to hit something? Anyway, while it's doing that, I'll continue. So, the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium's mission is to inspire stewardship by creating educational experiences where rivers and history come alive. Stewardship of rivers and history, stewardship of rivers doesn't start directly in the water, where you've got a pipe going in or you have an access point where there's a river boat ramp or something along those lines. It starts on the land. So, a lot of the work that we do in conservation programs with partners is around soil health and around inspiring native landscaping with partners who are leading this effort in which the River Museum supports being the Dubuque County Conservation Board and ISU Master Gardener. So, I want to be very clear with that. We are supporting that initiative. That is a Dubuque County Conservation Board and an ISU Master Gardener-led program among the monarchs. It is awesome. But soil health then bleeds into our private lands. Now, Iowa is an extremely altered state. About 97% of the state of Iowa is privately owned. The majority of Iowa's original landscape has been altered drastically for many different reasons. And so, in Iowa, we can disproportionately impact the health of our rivers by investing heavily in private lands conservation. And that's happening across Dubuque County with our Dubuque County watersheds, with that 2080 agreement that you all signed into with the county as well. That is activating private lands to improve water quality. And you're going to be doing way more than activating private landowners for water quality outcomes. There's also going to be carbon dioxide sequestration. There's going to be erosion prevention, increase in profitability of some of these fields, innovations in agriculture and local foods. There's so many cool things that are happening with partners around the Dubuque community. And then water quality with freshwater ecosystems, specifically around restoration and species restoration in particular. The Dubuque County Conservation Board and its National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium does not manage land. We are a member of the Association of Zoos and Aquariums. That is our conservation identity. It's an identity of about 200 members that welcome over 200 million people on an annual basis. And through that identity, we are well poised to manage species on a species level. So, at the River Museum, we're not just working with freshwater mussels out in the community. We are also working with our Living Collections team to breed the most endangered amphibian in North America and release these animals back into the wild by toad. We are working with the Florida Department of Game and Fish, other AZA facilities, and different marine sanctuaries to help save corals that are under threat in the United States' largest barrier reef, being the Florida Reef Tract Rescue Project, where the River Museum is currently housing corals in sort of an ark, where these animals are under threat due to a tissue-eating disease that is ravaging about 16 species along the entire coastline of Florida, all the way down to the dry Tortugas. Zoos and aquariums across the country stepped up, and when we stepped up, we brought these animals to Iowa. So, we're not the only ones that have these animals. Blank Park Zoo also has these, as well as zoos and aquariums across the country. So, now that I can't read anything except for what's up there, let's get into Take Care. Okay. So, about two years ago, I don't know if you remember, I did Dancing with the Stars. That was in 2019. I think that was three years ago now. I won judges' choice and split my pants onstage. But I did that to raise funds and awareness for a new initiative that the River Museum was building out. And that was Take Care. I don't know about you, but you know, being a Midwesterner, you walk in anywhere, you walk out somewhere, somebody's going to say, "Hey, Take Care, Jared. Take Care, Take Care." I was like, "Man, this is perfect." Because what we were building in conservation programs was around advocacy, research, and community engagement. So, Take Care stands for conservation action through advocacy. Education is a form of advocacy. Research, humans and our relationship with the environment, and direct community engagement. And that's the piece that is most established currently, is the direct community engagement component, which we're going to speak about mostly here for the next 12 minutes. But first, we're going to dive into advocacy. So, the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium, we are a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), but we can support good policy. We can sign on in support of good policy. Nonpartisan, I was recently told by a colleague of mine to leave politics and politicians at the door and focus on good policy, and you will always be fine. And that is what we have been focused on, and we've been acting collectively, not by ourselves, but through two different networks. One network being the Aquarium Conservation Partnership, which is a network of 28 aquariums across the United States, aquariums that are advocating on behalf of marine ecosystems, freshwater ecosystems, plastics pollution advocacy, as well as climate action advocacy. The River Museum and Aquarium is involved in many forms through those, the Break Free from Plastics Act being one that we have supported over the years, the Mississippi River Restoration and Resiliency Initiative, which is currently in committee, I think, if I remember correctly. And then we also work collectively through the Mississippi River Network. The Mississippi River Network being a network of 58 organizations in all 10 states bordering the Mississippi River, advocating for things such as invasive species restoration, flood-ready infrastructure, farm bill initiatives to reduce fertilizer pollution entering the Mississippi River and ultimately the Gulf of Mexico. Those are some of the things in which the River Museum is working towards because those pieces are mission-driven, right? Our mission is to inspire stewardship through educational experiences. Advocacy is education. Education is advocacy. The research side of things is slowly evolving. Currently, it is mostly a relationship and a facilitated effort. We have worked and brought together the U.S. Geological Survey and a zebra mussel control using dissolved CO2 in a closed-system project, which is pretty cool, with the University of Wisconsin and the University of Dubuque. We hosted that at the River Museum. We started doing some water quality sampling in the Upper B Branch Creek, which you can see right there, as well as some mussel suitability survivorship work. Mussels can, in fact, survive in the B Branch Creek. It's wonderful. There's eight species of fish that we pulled out of there on Saturday, so there are at least eight species of fish in there. One that was a little bit, a stone-roller, that was a little unexpected, so we'll have to see what the DNR sends back to us. But right now, I do believe there are more and more, and there will continue to be more and more fish migrating up from the Lower B Branch of the Mississippi River as those gates remain open over time. The area of the stream that is the best habitat, go figure, it's right there. It's the top. That's the part that currently looks the most and has the same sediment and flow pattern as what a stream that size should have in Iowa. So, I think we'll continue to see greater biodiversity in that stretch. But one of the things that we found in there was a really high level of sodium chloride, and so the University of Dubuque actually took over a pretty cool piece there. And UD's been doing water quality sampling in there with their students and just recently presented at a river symposium in La Crosse this two weeks ago, actually. So, the research piece continues to grow. I am an educator, not a researcher, so developing these relationships and connecting folks is kind of where I think our strength will continue to be, but it is definitely something we are excited to continue building. And lastly, engagement. It probably comes as no surprise that this is where the majority of my focus personally is because I just love people. I used to... I've been in environmental education now for about 15 years, 16 years coming up here in May since I graduated from Iowa State back in the day. And I always got asked the same question, working in South Dakota, working in Pennsylvania, working in Texas, working out in Washington. Kids wanted to know what your favorite animal was, right? And I would always say the belted kingfisher. That was always my go-to, and it's because the female is less colorful than the male. Plus, they have like two web toes and they catch fish and bang them against sticks and swallow them, and they dig burrows, and just a cool fish, a cool bird. But I had an epiphany about six years ago, and that's kind of what led to where we are today. People are my favorite animal. Like, we caused most of these problems. We did. The things that Gina opened with, yeah, that's our fault. The water quality issues that we're currently experiencing, that is our fault. The inequities we see in where communities are built and groups of people who have been forced to live in certain areas that are contaminated with industrial pollutants, that's our fault! But it's also up to us to fix it, so we are the solution. That's where the hope comes in. We are the solution, and if enough people believe that, enough people care, slowly they're going to understand how they can act. And that is where these programs come into play. You'll see there's Watershed Care, North American Freshwater Mussel Care, Teens Take Care, Big River Care. The Watershed Care component is what our greenhouse is currently doing. There's a lot of pictures up there. One of them does not belong. You can probably figure out which one that is. I'm going to quiz you on it here at the end. But Watershed Care is about inspiring people to manage their land for water quality outcomes, manage their land to improve infiltration, decrease surface runoff, decrease inputs of toxic chemicals, and landscape for wildlife, landscape using native plants. That's Watershed Care. North American Freshwater Mussel Care, that's exactly what it sounds like. Species restoration on a species level. Working to innovate new technologies and learn more and more about these animals, these seemingly insignificant animals. And if we can protect a mussel, I mean, we can protect anything. Mussels are amazing, but you would not know that unless you've had that personal lived experience with those animals, like I have, growing up on the river. And that's what leads us to Teens Take Care and Big River Care. So, about a year ago now, we... Actually, two years ago now, 2020, kind of put a pause on this. We started building out teen engagement as a primary audience at the River Museum. And one of the reasons for that is because we saw a need. In the Dubuque community, the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium, and a lot of our engagement partners who also work through environmental education programs, they do a really amazing job at engaging K through 5. And then it gets more difficult with middle schoolers. And then high school was almost impossible. It's because we didn't know how to do it right. Do you know what organization does know how to do this right? Multicultural Family Center, man. That place is rocking. And so, we started working with MFC a lot and learning a lot from MFC. But we also heard from environmental clubs at some of the local high schools, and some of them are really exploding and going crazy right now. And we knew there was this population of teens in our community that did understand, that did care, that were ready to act. We know the River Museum can be this pedestal, this soapbox in which teens' voices can be heard. We see a lot of people. We have a very large reach. So, we built a program this past year targeting those teens, those teens who have already self-identified as being passionate about natural resources and sustainability. And it's been amazing. I think my favorite part is just the community that has been building because we didn't prioritize, you know, hard scientific outcomes, like you have to understand this or you need to be able to do this. It was actually built more around leadership outcomes. The... My favorite appendix of the National... The Next Generation Science Standards? No, sorry, Iowa Core. Appendix F. It's 21st Century Skills. It's all about employability skills, leadership skills, teamwork skills, self-confidence, empathy. It's such a cool piece that needs to be built into every single piece of education. But in this process, we discovered that it really wasn't all that equitable because we were missing other teens in our community that have not yet self-identified as being passionate about natural resources and sustainability. And a lot of that has to do with lived experiences. Teens that have already self-identified, they understand and they care because they've experienced it. They're ready to act. There's teens in our community that don't understand and don't know they care yet. And that's where Big River Care comes in. So, Big River Care isn't really about developing leadership skills or a voice or a platform for teens to take action. It's about fun. If you can put together an experience that is fun, that is relevant, safe, what you're trying to do is create plates, and that's what Big River Care is. It's two 24-foot canoes that seat up to 10 people each, two boats that are going to be used to take teens out on the Mississippi River in hopes that through that intense experience, they understand a little bit better, they care. And research shows that even after one intensive experience, it just... It only takes one. That could be that aha moment that catapults these teens along that pathway, catapults people towards environmental literacy, catapults people towards action. And so, that is Take Care. Take conservation action through advocacy, research, and engagement. And I need to close by just sharing with anybody, everybody that's watching, I don't know who's... Should I wave at a camera? We live in a really special place filled with very special people who care a lot and are doing amazing work. I challenge these fifth graders, and so I'm going to challenge everybody here, and I'm also going to challenge those at home who are watching. Don't just pay attention to the suck. Don't just pay attention to the crisis, the nasty. That stuff's easy to find. That's shoved down your throat every single day. What's more difficult is to find the hope, to find the solutions, to find the people, to find the organizations that are doing the good things because they are all around us, and if you look even just under the surface, you'll find it. So, I will... I've got one minute, so I will say thank you very much for having me tonight. Thank you, Gina, for inviting me. Hi, Beth. Good to see you back there. Take care.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. McGovern, and I'm sure you'd be open to some questions?
Yeah, by all means.
Okay, or some observations? Any members of the council would like to make a comment? Ms. Russell?
Thank you. Jared, I'm sure that lots of people watching your presentation are going to be very inspired and want to get involved. So, if I'm a family and I want to get involved, how do I find these programs? How do I get involved?
Come down to the River Museum and ask for me. I can put you in contact with the right people. Otherwise, you know, if you are somebody who regularly visits... Otherwise, you know, if you are somebody who regularly visits county properties, talk to the Conservation Board, they're leading initiatives like this as well. If you visit the Mines of Spain State Recreation Area, pop in, talk to Jason. Talk to both Jasons, there's actually two of them. Yeah, talk to them, ask them. You're down at the River Museum, ask us. Ask any of the educators that are on the floor. Gina?
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Farber?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for hosting us, by the way, for the Day of Caring, because that was a keen insight into everything that you are talking about today, your passion, your enthusiasm. And how fortunate were we that we had you as our docent for the day, and we learned, at least I did, so much about the River Museum, but most importantly, about your care. And that, I love the phrase that you said, "We are the problem and the solution." So please let us know how we can help in garnering up more support and more solution and problem-solving for you. But thank you. I just applaud your energy, your enthusiasm, and for all that you're doing for the museum. And I think those that know you probably echo the same thing to you almost every day. So a big thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Wethel?
So I almost hear you as it's a call to action. And I think as a parent, it's my responsibility to do this job. But I think the great thing about Dubuque is that when parents don't know how to, we have a lot of resources to help them. I grew up on the river, throwing mussels back into the river. I would walk up and down the shore, and I have great memories of it. There's no mussels where I grew up anymore. There's none. And so I've talked to my daughters about that. When we walk along the riverside in Sebula, I mean, I used to find button shells and the good stuff, you know? There's none of it anymore. So I notice when I take my kids out on the river, whether it's kayaking or just walking the river, they come back with a new energy, right? And so I think that as a parent and as parents maybe out there, we have to work at that and to, as you said, I think advocacy is education and education is advocacy. We're their first teachers as parents. And so I really love that you have access for children who don't have that knowledge yet. And so, yeah, I'm fired up to hear you. So thank you.
And that's key, yet, right? Yet. My little boy, my two-and-a-half-year-old, this gave me really a lot of hope again the other day. I was putting him down to bed, and without any prompting, he looks at me, he says, "I like my daddy, I like my mommy, I like my puppies, I like my house, I like my bed, I love outside." So happy. Awesome. Well, thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it.
There's more.
Oh, we got more? Oh, gosh.
There's more. Well, I'll let you know when we're all done. There's a lot to say. So, because we do have a little time for questions, and we appreciate your input on this. So Mr. Spring?
Thank you. Jared, you mentioned that they said, unfortunately, I wasn't able to come to that Saturday event where you guys were discovering or categorizing or cataloging these species. Eight, that's impressive. I remember when the B branches first discussed, that was a hope of having fish. I know I love walking by it and seeing all the little ducks, because I like ducks. I don't know if the families, they don't seem to be back yet, but maybe that's why our species keeps getting messed with. They keep eating all the number of fish, so.
You know, speaking with the DNR, Dan was down here from Manchester, and that thing was buried for so long that anything came back is amazing. And the fact that we found eight species, and that does not do justice to the biomass. Like, you walk down there, this is not something I saw. Until this connectivity was completed, and those gates haven't been down all that long, so fish haven't had an opportunity yet. And you should see more as the warm, or as the river starts to warm. River temperatures were about seventy degrees yesterday when I was out fishing. And so as the river continues to warm, fish will be drawn to that discharge right there. And so they may start moving up even further. But eight species, and if you walk it tomorrow, you're going to see schools of fish, of thousands of fish in that upper B branch right now. That was, that was cool.
Thank you, Jared.
Any other comments? Mr. Mayor, do you have some comments or questions?
Thank you, Mayor Protam Resnick. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. Jared, thank you so much for being here and for providing this information for us and for anybody who's watching. You know, it's interesting you bring up the B branch in such detail today. I'm actually sitting here in Washington, DC, doing some advocacy work on behalf of us here in the city of Dubuque. And the B branch was a major topic of conversation in a couple of the meetings that I had today. In particular, we were talking about disaster mitigation with FEMA, and that we discussed how Dubuque has solved a particular challenge that we had over years. And what I also hear you saying now, and I think the next thing that we need to continue to talk about is, you know, what is the challenge we need to continue to solve? And how are we going to go about doing that? And the partnership that we have with you at the National Mississippi River Museum, along with the partnerships that we have with the county of Dubuque and all up and down the river, and, you know, with the folks who are living on the land in our community, you know, those partnerships are the answer. And making sure that we continue to focus on living with the land and not just on the land, living together in harmony with our surroundings and really working together to try and make sure that whatever we do is sustainable in practice and the actions that we take. So thank you for being a call to that action, and I'm looking forward to continuing to solve these very, very big challenges together.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I have a little story for you. My great uncles were immigrants from Austria about 1915, and they settled in Muscatine. They came through Ellis Island, and their names were Resnichek, and they changed it to Resnick. And they were in the button industry. That's their manual labors, worked to the bone, you know, doing exactly what you showed us. Those shells were all around their homes, and they were very proud of the work they do. So, I mean, there's a real connection to us and what we do and how we make a living here in the United States. So I appreciate that when you said, "This is our fault," but I like to say, "This is our responsibility." I don't know that they felt like they were doing anything wrong at the time. You mentioned there were millions and billions around. So it is our responsibility to do better, though. And I also like, and I like to say, because I'm an educator, as you are, and I like to say, "This is our doing, and we need to redo this and do it well." So a lot of people like to put off the blame. It wasn't me. Well, it was my great uncles, though. But, so I appreciate all the great things that you do, and thank you very much for coming. Ms. Bell, do you have any closing comments? All right. Would you have one last story for us?
I do agree with you wholeheartedly that we don't villainize the past, because people's mindsets and value systems and our understanding of the world around us changes over time. I prefer to romanticize the present, so thank you.
Again, yes, Mr. Jones?
Let me just dive into one quick thing. You mentioned the high salt levels on the input of the B branch, and that's something that we do to make our roads safe. And how bad is it? What remedies might there be to get less of that in the runoff?
So from my understanding, the city already does quite a bit with what they can do, balancing public safety and water quality. I've heard a lot from our city team on that. From what the University of Dubuque team had found is that we do approach shock toxicity levels during spring runoff, and we do approach, I think how it was phrased was persistent toxicity, but it doesn't reach those levels to the point where you would experience large die-offs or anything like that due to sodium chloride. The nature of an entirely urban watershed, being six square miles entirely within the city of Dubuque, is that you do need to balance that with public safety and roads. And I do think that the city of Dubuque is doing a good job of that. I do have some recommendations that I would love to discuss, maybe with some of your city roads departments, some things, as far as maybe where snow is deposited during the winter from roads and from parking lots. But other than that, I understand the balance. There has to be a balance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you very much. A lot of great things that you're doing. Thanks for bringing this to our attention and taking our questions. And we're just excited that you're here, working with Ms. Bell, and doing so many wonderful things. So with that, this brings the work session to a close, and we are adjourned.